This is our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, January 24th, 2019. And if you would all stand with me, remove your hats for the pledge. Carl, would you lead us please?
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, without any injustice from. Please proceed.
Very much. Our first order of business this evening will be a presentation by our village historian, Lynn Barton. We have been, as a village, putting together a preview for what's coming up, 2019. We've also been looking back at progress of 2018, and I believe that there will be in the Webster Herald a special edition for the progress. So it is appropriate this evening to have Lynn here and give us an update on what has happened and what will be happening.
Excuse me.
Welcome.
Hi, guys. Here, I just have this. Not a lot, but just, there's a lot of people that haven't been in the office, so.
Yep.
Well, my goal since I became historian in 2004 was to organize and inventory everything in the office. It was a disaster. It's getting a little better. At one point, the ceiling collapsed, and I don't remember, Jake was entering your term as mayor. Dorothy had got grant money, and we got all the shell feed and stuff. It was a while ago. Well, anyway. So now everything is stored in acid-free boxes and things like that. I have six different volunteers that worked with me during the week. One of them has put together an access database, which you can see a copy of, but all I did was do a search on holds, and these were the items that came up. Most of them are all town items, but there is one that belongs to the village, like at the bottom on the second page. So some of the things in the office belong to the museum. They don't have a lot of storage for documents and things like that. But of course, we have lots of paper items and books. All the copies of the Webster Herald, those are in my office. They're not found anymore, so I'm safe. I'm putting them in acid-free boxes. And I am saving a second copy if I have one upstairs, in case anybody ever wants to take one and make a copy, or I don't really want to mess with the original that I'm keeping. So anyway, we have so far in the database, 4,000 items. We're only up, if you go to the next page, you'll see I have box 52. That's approximately the box we've gotten and included so far. But you can see, this is just one new thing of the boxes. The ones with the sticky notes are ones that have been inventoried by the ladies, and they just have to be inputted into the database. I have one volunteer that does that. She's extremely accurate, so she works on that Thursday mornings. The next page, this is the Webster Herald. The picture on the right shows the boxes I'm now keeping them in. They go back to, I have one book from a year in the 1920s, then they jump up to the 1930s. On the page on the right, down at the bottom, there's this brown pile of paper. Those came from the Webster Herald, and those are like 1901, or, you know?
Yeah, they didn't really go all, yeah.
And they're not even, I don't even want to touch them. They're very, very fragile. And the early Webster Herald's didn't really have a lot of local news in them. They were mainly, you know, world news, things going on. So they aren't quite as valuable for local history, but I have them, so maybe the next historian will want to tackle those. I don't know. This is just another view. This one picture on the left shows a lot of the town records, assessment books and things like that, and they come in handy sometimes. Over on the far left, all that section is all school records. I have one lady that's been working on that for six or seven years. She comes in on Monday mornings, and she's got everything organized in the boxes by years, by schools, and now she's going through and putting codes on them and, you know, getting that done. And then here's today, a couple of the ladies that come in on Thursday, Sharon Kutcher and Carol Ola, and they do the, they go through and inventory the items. So some of the things I do get requests for pretty regularly are, I just had one in December after Christmas, a couple were buying a new house at 256 East Main Street next to the old cemetery, and they asked if I had any history on it. Luckily, I had a postcard. So the last picture shows the house today, and then the postcard that I found, so I emailed them a copy of that. Also, I get, you know, when new businesses start opening up, I'll find pictures if I think they'd be interested. So the one at the top, the center building, is where the R Salon is now. That was the old trolley stop, and you can see there are the trolley tracks along Main Street, so.
Is that Darrell in the bottom picture?
Yeah.
Oh, that could be.
Could be. So the trolley, so this has to be after 1900, because the trolley tracks went in right around 1900. The one below show the house on the left, that's where Lawa's is today and the pickle paintbrush.
Yep.
So I gave copies of these to both of those folks. So I would say the inventorying takes up most of my time. I have one volunteer that cuts out articles from the DNC, because Bob and I don't get the paper anymore, and he's a neighbor, and he does that for me, because I think some of that stuff is worth keeping when it pertains to Webster. I have a lot of, there's glass plate negatives. Those belong to the village. As far as I've ever heard, they belong to the village, and they're in a fireproof file cabinet.
I got you that one on the corner.
These pictures are from glass plate negatives.
I gave you that one on the corner.
Yes, yes, you did. And I have a lot of photographs that I've taken through the years, or the previous historians have taken. I've put together three programs as, right now. There were slide, slide things with slide programs that the previous historian used to do programs, but he never, there's never been any written word about what it was about. Like, there are some slides, I don't even know what they are or where they were, so that's too bad. And some of them go back to when George Curtis was the village historian. I don't, there's a bridge, I don't know where that is. It could be someplace where an old mill was, I don't know. So I'm doing PowerPoint. I've done one on early Webster churches, and I have all the information to go with each picture. I've finished one on historic houses for the historic properties group through the museum that I remember of. They give out plaques in May every year, the town does. There are over 60 properties now that have received plaques, and I've put together a slideshow on that. And Sharon Pratt, she enjoys talking, so we did a show at Cherry Ridge. I had to cut it down a little, because only one person fell asleep though, so that was pretty bad. And then I've done another program on three well-to-do businessmen in Webster and their historic homes. It was F. M. Jones, George Mason, and Mr. Jane, yeah. So I've got pictures of the houses and their businesses and things like that. That's, I don't know how long that program would be. So now the next one I want to do is on some of the other historic homes here in the village. So that's something I'll be working on. I do have a walking tour coming up, probably in May, depends on the weather, for the education group at the Webster Museum. And I think we're going to try and do a program, the Village Preservation Commission, sometime in May, maybe here in this room. We do have a PowerPoint on the Preservation Commission, but we might want to do one of the other programs that I've done. So, you know, we're always working on that. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I, yeah, I talked to Sharon Pratt, too, on that, because she said they're running out of houses in the town.
So we've finally run, as we said, the village is part of the town, so now we are trying to catch up and give some out each year to village properties. We've done, we've done a few of them.
Yeah.
But we still have quite a few more to do. We also, one year, we didn't give out plaques, but we replaced a historic marker down at the sandbar where there used to be a historic marker pertaining to, what was it?
Denonville.
Denonville, yes, yes. And there's one more that's missing, and these were put in, I think, 1959. The other one is a mill sign that was down just east of Phillips Road on Lake Road by Four Mile Creek. And I have photos of them, so I know what they are. So we're kind of thinking, maybe we will forego, we'll use the money one year toward replacing that sign. Unfortunately, I think when Lake Road has been widened and they've done things, they just took the signs out. It's a state road, I believe, so who knows what happened to them? So it's kind of nice to get those back.
I wonder, Jake, is there anything that we could find out about that? About those signs? Is there anybody who, you can't tell?
Problem is, a lot of the guys from the town are all retired now that were around.
Well, that's.
Yeah, if we knew when it happened, we could talk to the engineer in charge of the project.
But I don't know when they came down, but they've been down for quite a while.
I remember seeing that.
Yeah.
Or one of the first settlements.
Yeah, I think it was Caleb Hyatt.
Yeah.
He had a couple of mill and different things down there. I found a write-up about Four Mile Creek, and it was Hyatt Wright, which would be Burger Wright. They lived in the house down by Nine Mile Point. They owned all the property where Hedges is and the cottages and everything. And she was kind of interviewing her dad and talking about the old mills and things like that along Four Mile Creek, and that was pretty interesting. There were quite a few of them. Grist mills, you know, some were most all powered by water, but then there was one that they thought they could do it with a windmill, but the wind blew it apart, so that didn't work.
Do we, do we have any photographs now?
I have one photo, which I believe we put it in our book when we did it, of the one mill that was on the Thayer property, Four Mile Creek, but behind where the Thayer property was, on Basket Road. And it's like falling apart, but it's the only one that I've seen. And who knows, maybe there's artifacts or foundations. I don't know, I haven't walked around there, so I'm not sure.
Lynn, how much time do you have invested in all these projects?
I'm always there nine hours a week, because that's when all the folks come into work. And then, you know, I have other times when I'm working, meetings and things. No one's really said how many hours I should put in for all the money I make.
For all the.
We all make a lot of money.
But anyway, so if you don't have any other questions.
I have, Lynn, thanks for all that you do.
Thanks.
We appreciate that and keep up the good work. I was just thinking about one house on Whitey Road. It's across from the walking trail, it was across from, recently tore down, tonight, surprised.
Oh, the Italianate one?
Surprised to me.
Wendy Marsh's house, that was the most beautiful property.
It was.
She had a pond down there.
I couldn't believe it was gone.
I know, the person that bought the property, they didn't want it.
Was there a demolition?
Oh, yeah, they went through the whole thing.
Wow.
And, you know, the town doesn't, neither does the village, you don't have a way to stop people from tearing their buildings down. You can hold them off for maybe a year, but they're going to be able to do it.
I know.
I was lucky to be able to go on that property with Wendy Marsh when she had it, and she took me in a rowboat around the lake, and I took photos, and you know what? It was like you were in the Adirondacks.
Yeah.
Just surround, it backs up to Webster Park.
Yeah.
But I think they built a house back there, and I don't know if they built more than one.
Yeah.
It's a shame.
It's a shame, it's fine, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And there was, one other one was on 250 north of Wall Road on the west side, that was closer to, across from the church.
Just past Imperial.
Oh, the little.
Just past Imperial, yeah.
Yeah, the whole federal style.
I know there was a.
Was that the little Greek revival?
Greek revival, yeah.
Did that one recently come down? There's one that's going to come down, down there. The one, there is one that's.
Yeah, I was surprised to see, it looked like they were beginning to work on that, and then they put a roof on it.
I guess it had, I think it had really bad structural damage from previous.
I was sorry to see that, though, too.
And she had, I think, the building inspector from the town put down a hook at it. Were you aware of that?
I was aware of the property.
Yeah, which was a real shame, but here she bought it thinking she could restore it, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's no way.
Those are two old ones that are.
But there's no way to protect them either.
There's a lot of, I wish I had pictures of all the ones. It used to be Long Ridge Road. There were some other really old Greek revivals and things, but they're, you know, they've been long gone, probably when they widened the road or something. I don't know.
But they fixed that one up across from the.
Bowley Alley.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Really nice topic, yeah.
Yeah, they saved it. It was open to the weather, of course. So anyway.
Thank you.
I appreciate this, Lynn, because I had forgotten, besides myself here, there's Carl and Jude that I was playing with.
And there is a picture.
They ran away to class.
You better say, wait a minute, because we're the old, because he's got it.
Carl, I found a picture of you, remember, Mr. Pellet?
It's in the book.
He, not that, no, not, I don't think I put him in.
Standing by an apple cart or something like that?
No, he had his store wagon from Pellet Store on Lake Road, and he looked exactly like.
Yeah, I know who he was, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that was me. My 15th birthday.
That was a while ago, though, so I'm not sure he would look like him now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Lynn, yeah.
Thank you. All right, at this point, no need to public comment. Anybody would like to address the board on anything that could come up? Yes, sir.
Peter Oliver, 59 Duning. I just want to tag on to that for just a moment and just thank Lynn for all the hard work she does. It's, I'm, a lot of the groups that she's involved in, I happen to be there, too, and so we interact a lot. And just last, a couple of weeks ago, she came down this Saturday and spent my, every third Saturday I have to dose him at the museum, so she was down there with me.
But tell them what we found. I showed him the attic, which I.
The attic is amazing at the museum. I wouldn't suggest going over there in the dark, but it is a, because it's, there's a lot of stuff up there.
And I have my section, and we, I took Peter up to show him, because it needs to be tackled. But there was a little three-by-five cart, catwalk.
Yeah, it's like, was it one of those, one of those metal boxes that hold index cards?
And it's, I think, I'm pretty sure it was George Curtis did it, the previous, you know, two times back historian, and it's, he must have gone through all the minutes of the village, and he has written down all the names and what they were, if they were on zoning board.
Planning board, building.
Were they the constable?
Also the clerks, they're all there, so.
Constables from like 1905, wasn't there a constable?
Yeah, there was.
So I'm going to scan them, and then I'm going to forward them to Peter, and you were going to do something.
Yeah, and I'll try to figure out, drop them out and make them back into index cards again, but in a digital form. And then we were going to use those, because it is like, it's like a gem, and when it looks like, you know, because really, you look at that, you get a sense of not, you know, who was here, which is, which is hard sometimes. I mean, the oath book is useful, and the minutes are there, but this is a different kind of things that'll actually say, like, you know, the person's name and when they served. So like, just an example, we looked up Deek, Judy's uncle, and, you know, he, we had, he has on there his original, when he was on the board the first time. But what we didn't realize, at least I didn't realize, is he was actually on, I believe it's at the zoning board.
One of them.
The zoning or planning board before he was ever on the village board. Did not know, and this actually gave that record, so it's really a valuable tool to figure out.
Yeah, so we just happened to find it up there. You never know what you'll find.
Yeah, so, yeah. So just have to be careful not to fall into something.
The floor won't fall, the floor won't collapse.
No, no, the floor is great.
It's pretty sturdy now.
And the lights are much better now, too.
Yeah.
But she does, but she does a great job, and not only that, but it's really good working with her, because we can sit there and go back and forth. Just recently, someone, when I was, when I was a dose, had dropped off a picture, like a photograph, an aerial photograph of the area down by, basically it was taken from a wetherly perspective, or from, actually, it's a westerly perspective with the axis in the middle, going north or south, and it is a wonderful shot of Orchard Street, the old.
Railroad Street.
Railroad Street. All the industry down there, so it's a great.
And I don't know what time period, but it, you know where it came from, Jake, dug it down in the North Port. They got it from John Martin.
Oh, dude.
So unfortunately, it's.
You've got to go over and see that.
Unfortunately, it stuck to the glass, because it was in a damp place, so I won't ever be able to probably get it out and get a copy of it.
But it's a great photo.
Yeah.
And it's an aerial photo, which makes it even better. So I just, I can't say enough about what she does. She does a great job and stuff.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, and we will move to regular village board business. First item on our agenda this evening is a resolution to approve the minutes of January 10th village board meeting, as written by the clerk. I have an opportunity to look those over. If there are no comments about that, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Valkeen?
Hi.
Trustee Lauer?
Hi.
Trustee Alito?
Hi.
Trustee Watzel?
Aye.
So you're by.
Oh, no.
Now, if you want, no, I couldn't get it on, because I need to film it.
All right, second item is authorization to, or resolution to lift the resolution to authorize Mayor Byers to sign supplemental agreement number two with Lew Engineers from the table, so that we can act upon it. Motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll say.
Sorry, we missed that. What was that again?
Jury made a motion. Jury.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
She's now used to this whole full board meeting.
Item number three is the resolution to authorize Mayor Byers to sign supplemental agreement number two with Lew Engineers and authorize payment of invoices totaling $64,735.99, which is less than what we anticipated by about $10,000. So, resolution of the village of Webster's, Board of Trustees authorizing the mayor to sign a supplemental agreement with an engineering firm to provide construction inspection services related to the North Avenue Connected Project. The following is a resolution offered and moved towards adoption, whereas the project's demands for construction inspection services has exceeded the scope of the original contract for the same. A supplemental agreement to provide for additional construction inspection service and related work is required. Now, therefore, the village of Webster Board of Trustees duly convened does hereby, one, resolve that the village of Webster Board of Trustees hereby approves the supplemental agreement number two, construction inspection agreement with Lew Engineers dated 19 December 2018, and is hereby further resolve that the village of Webster Board of Trustees hereby authorize the mayor to sign the engineering consulting agreement with Lew Engineers to secure the services of the firm as detailed in the agreement. And is hereby further resolve, the resolution shall take effect immediately. And a motion for approval?
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Cassie?
I believe that that will close out, is that correct, Jake?
No, there's, there's one more bill coming that email that I ordered, it should be about five grand, but that's why the agreement was for about seventy-five. The agreement would cover, they've done everything to the end, but that's the, I think it was one more, one more invoice for the final closeout, so. But that will all be covered under the agreement.
Okay.
This is just one bill.
It's not over the top, okay.
No, it's up to, it's up to seventy-five thousand, so this is what's invoiced to date, and then there's that one more thing, so.
Okay, so this is what it looks like.
Next, we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I believe, Jude, you had an opportunity to look through them and.
Yeah, I didn't really have any questions.
Oh, this one's pretty simple.
It was kind of simple stuff.
Yet there are no other, no questions. I entertain a motion to approve payment of claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Cassie?
The office financial statements, please, take note of them. We are now at the half-year mark. These are dated 1/24, but basically are through 12/31, half-year period. And we are beginning to consider now the budget. Meeting will begin next week in a preliminary meeting, and we will be looking at our workshops. We have three of, three of them prior to April and voting on the budget, so there will be some dedicated time given to the budget at those workshops, as well as possibly special workshops called for that as well. Or I've also considered having like a workshop prior to the board meeting, another seven other day, just coming in early and doing it. Okay? So we are beginning preliminary process, looking at budget, so look these over. If you have questions, concerns, and so on, please pass them on. One of the things that I would bring up, it's been in the paper, in fact, it was on the news tonight, Channel 13, and I don't know what other channels, but the governor, if you are not aware, took AIM funding, which is for, I had it now, incentives aid and incentives to municipalities, is that correct? Which is actually money that municipalities can use for what they wish, kind of like state aid. And the governor has removed those funds from any municipality, town or village, in which those funds are less than 2% of their total budget for 2017. Yes, it was .93%, but it was $33,000, and that is not something that this village can make up by raising even to the, to the top of the tax cap. So it is significant. The governor said those monies would, are not significant, they're just, you know, too small to be concerned with. That affects 480 of the 531 villages in New York State. So if you are concerned about it, certainly feel free to contact your assemblyman or your senator. I know that Pam Helming is going to be very vocal about putting it back into the budget. I had an opportunity to talk to Mark Johns just this evening, and he, too, is advocating for it to go back in. So we wait and see, but it is a significant, significant thing for us. So we will consider that as we move forward, since the budget. So, uh, we will, um, consider that as we move forward, uh, since the budget is not approved at the state level until April first, I believe, he hopes to have it done, so, um, we should know when we move forward. So, I would add that you look those over. Next, we have a, um, an item here, a resolution to amend the village office hours, previously set July tenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the organizational meeting. Effective March the first, two thousand and eighteen, the office will be open Monday, Friday, um, eight AM to four-thirty, except Thursday, which will be eight AM to six PM. This is what we are proposing. Uh, it had, was brought up and discussed at the last meeting, that it is difficult for, um, closure on Thursday nights, and then set up here for the board meeting at seven o'clock, and so it has been asked that, um, the office close at six. Will the passports continue until six or five-thirty?
Six.
They will continue right until six o'clock. Uh, so it will not affect the passport times, because we have had them only until six o'clock on a Thursday, um, and then the office stayed open an additional half hour, but now it will close at six. We had discussion, any further discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to amend the Village of Webster office hours previously set to now be Monday through Friday, eight AM to four-thirty, except Thursday, which will be eight AM to six PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Don't do that again, Dale.
You saw that?
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Agenda item seven, we have a resolution to, um, authorize Dan Bordle to participate in the one-day grade-three module course, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, at a cost not to exceed three hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. I believe that this has to do with, um, his grade-three operator license for the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yep.
So we are doing this early because that allows for cheaper enrollment?
They were already filling up, too.
Hey, Robert, are you filling up?
Yeah.
It's a, it's a one-day class, I think there's a little correction being made in the mileage, unless you're getting lost on the way. It's about seventy miles each way.
I Googled it, I went on Google Maps, so you might want to ask Google.
No, it says, you know, seven, sixty-nine point seven-six miles per way, but then it's
Two hundred and fifty-six.
Two hundred and fifty-six miles, I just noticed.
It's double seventy.
It should be one forty.
Double seventy is a one forty.
But if the equinox is available, you can take that. You know, and then we'd save that amount, but this would allow that, just in case it's not.
Me that, then it's, I'm gonna spend around real quick.
He's taking the scenic route.
Well, amending the mileage, other than that, is there?
Yes.
Is there any objection to it? I have a motion to approve, uh, the resolution to send Dan Bordle to.
I'll make that motion for Dan. I'll second it.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Valkeen?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
I'll clear it for a second. Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed. You guys are trying to.
You were clear this.
I heard trustee Alito, you know?
Thank you.
Apparently I left my brain home.
No, half of it's here.
She didn't say, no, you're doing fine, half of it's here.
No.
Don's up.
We'll move on, Don, you have anything for us this evening?
Calculating the mileage.
We love you.
That's why I wasn't a math teacher.
Oh, I heard you say it, I didn't hear the mayor say it.
Oh, no.
Oh, you did?
Do you have anything for us this evening?
Um, the only thing I wanted to mention was that, uh, last week's zoning board meeting, in which Carl was there, the, uh, zoning board granted the variance for the, um, Verizon's thirty-seven-foot tower that's going to be behind the Knights of Columbus, and I gave the attorney for Verizon, Jared Lusk, who's the attorney at Nixon Peabody, I gave him a copy of our proposed, uh, new local law on wireless. Facilities, and, um, he went to Verizon and, uh, he, they authorized him, if he had any comments on the law, he was going to get them to me by, um, the fourteenth, by the time of the, uh, public hearing. Um, you know, good batter, whatever, since, um, Verizon's going to, you know, in the future, we can tend to deal with it, so. So I'll let you know what those comments are. If I get them by the time of the public hearing, we could put them into the record then.
That would be great, actually. Uh, that company, you know, at least chimed in on it, their, their thoughts about it.
Right, well, I wanted him to see if there, you know, if there's something that, you know, really jumped out as, would be a real issue with them, or anything like that.
I think that's.
So he said he'd do that.
There was good conversation, didn't it?
Yeah.
We had a good, good, uh, talk with everybody there. So they really turned it, um, informational. Lot about unanswered questions, I bet we had.
Mayor Byers?
See, they have.
I just wanted to let you know that the public hearing, um, announcement isn't in Webster Herald today, for the public hearing.
And that public hearing is on February fourteenth, our first regularly scheduled board meeting, um, of, uh, February. The, I believe tentatively, except for seven fifteen, but, uh, as we get to it.
It's gone since then.
Yeah, it is.
It is, yes.
And Jared, you have their wives together, still live?
Good morning, Bill, thanks, Doctor.
Maybe we could have a, maybe we could set up a couple of tables over here about six o'clock, we could maybe cater in, and have them come with their wives.
Yeah.
For her.
Issue, yeah.
Yeah.
I would actually like that.
Sweet heart table.
We don't have to do it just to show everybody.
It's kind of, on a Dino.
Thank you, Dale.
So that's all I get.
All right, clerk, Heather, or us, anything?
Yes, just have to point out that, um, I'm not sure if Jake or Clancy will be going, possibly John, but three of us will be going to the supervisory substance abuse detection course. It's also on Valentine's Day from ten to noon, and it's fifty dollars each, so I just wanted to let you know.
This is, uh, something that is required for supervisor?
Yes. Yearly, I believe, Jake, they come out last year.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's, it's yearly requirement. Oh, did they, they said they have to have sixty minutes of training, it doesn't say clearly in here. Sixty minutes of training on alcohol, and sixty minutes of training on controlled substances. Yeah, I got the alcohol in that.
You're wrong.
So.
Yeah, it doesn't state that, Jake, you're right, it doesn't say.
Yeah, they weren't real, they were, but just sixteen.
Does it usually say annually, it's an annual?
I can, I'll forge her information if you'd like.
Well, in light of possible legislation that's coming in, and states, this might be a very good thing for you to attend, because our policies will not change based on, changing the recreational use of.
Aye.
And one thing with the CDL licenses as well, we follow federal DOT guidelines under federal DOT test, and if the state could, the state can hand it out to you, it doesn't mean anybody that's CDL could drive, um, or could, could participate, because that's, uh, the federal standards, and as long as it's still, um, federally prohibited, it's not gonna, not gonna matter if they deliver it here or else, it's still not, uh, something that we're gonna allow, so.
Code enforcement, Will, it is nice to see you, I hope you are feeling better.
Actually, no, but I'm here.
No, but you're. I see we got new chairs. Are they comfortable?
Did you just?
His observation skills have gotten where he is.
Oh, I'm worried about it, ever since I achieved low self-esteem, life's been so much easier. Um, so, what I did, uh, is give you the annual report, because right around this time is when I do it, uh, ordinarily, um, well, about this time, I, I give the annual quite anyways, but, um, what I want to make note of is, uh, the year-end, um, permits, and what I do every year is, not only do I give you a multimedia graph with colors and everything, but I also work out the math for the percentage increase or decrease for each of the different permits, uh, and I think, uh, the reason I do this, because it's also good for forecasting, uh, for future, and, uh, so when the time comes for us to look at our fee schedule, maybe to readdress some of the, the fees that we have regarding permits and different types of applications, temporary sign permits, uh, administrative use permits that we give out for change of use and things like that, so, um, I'll just ask if you have any questions.
I didn't do the math.
So you can't vouch for tech, or?
What was the total in seventeen?
As far as what?
Um, fees, total.
We're about five thousand dollars short.
So we made, we made closure in eighteen last year?
Seventeen-nine, something like that, yeah. Uh, you'll be looking at, um, the permit fees and so on for the new law, for applications. Oh, yeah, that too, that's right, yeah. So that will be coming to us for amendment. And, uh, to piggyback off of what, uh, Don said, uh, I had sent an email out to one of the applicants that wanted to put a cell tower, well, cell tower, they're going to use an existing pool, a microcell over on Commercial Street, um, not the one that they were originally going to install, um, on the property that had our right-of-way inside their building, they moved it down the road, so I wrote him, because I hadn't heard from him in a while, because I asked for some information that he was missing on his application, and he said, based on the conversation he had with our attorney, uh, they're going to wait until we pass our law, because it seems like it would actually be to their benefit with that law in place than our current law, if we have it in place. Not sweet, but he tells. Anyone else have any questions?
That is not intentional.
I'm nice.
That, um, property that I asked you about, you don't have to mention it, just, did you go take a look?
I did look, although I couldn't see from the road or from an angle, uh, what you were talking about, but I know exactly where the problem is.
I know, we had this situation before there.
Yeah, so he does have a letter, I'm waiting for him to call me back, and he takes forever to call me back, but it's the back of the garage, I believe, that angle with the roof and everything like that, so, yeah, it's on the road.
Yeah, because they said it was much worse, and I don't know if they could see it better because they were in a bus.
Oh, it might be, um, last, yeah, last time I looked at it was, uh, actually when it was warmer out and less snow, and, uh, I was in, some lady, uh, one of the neighbors allowed me in the, her back property, and I had to actually see it from her property, as well as, yeah, but you can't see it from the road.
Well, they could from the bus on the road.
Yeah, I drove all the way around, because I knew exactly what I was looking for.
I'll have to take you on the bus.
Okay. He is on the bus. That's fine. Thanks, Warren. Thank you, Warren. Jake?
Um, just, uh, want to remind everybody that, uh, especially this time of year, um, there's no parking in the village, two AM to six AM all year round, um, so we can, you know, other times of year, it's street sweeping and other activities and things we're doing, but this time of year, especially important with the snow blowing, um, so, I just asked to remind everybody about that. Move your car.
Thanks to you and Teen Love, Jake.
Yeah, they're awesome.
Awesome.
Great job, awesome job.
They were, worked their butt off.
I even had a glove.
Did you?
Lots of, oh, it's just like riding a bike.
Everything, no, we're gonna load it.
I knew some different was out there, all the moms were told it up.
Few mailboxes, yeah, few mailboxes.
And a tow?
But they were in a tow, most of our mailboxes are on the front porch, so if we hit them.
Yeah, you're in. But I did, I heard a lot of compliments.
I did, too.
So, yeah, even people coming into our office, yeah, that was good. Well, the only thing is that, the one parking spot in front of where I live, um, you really can't get in there yet, because it's way too much snow, even plowed.
Only complaint I had, looking after cleaning the driveway quite clean, they came through and pushed all the, pushed that, entering.
We sent one on a special trip for that.
Yeah.
I was waiting that out. There, he's got it clean now.
Road looked great, but you can't get out of the driveway.
Yeah, the eagle has landed.
Now it's furled up.
Yeah, that's, uh, yeah, we've been going around pushing up the sludge, and now that it's softened up before, it's supposed to get back down to the several digits and that too, so, and we want to get it while it's all working, and, yeah, it's a clean house.
Um, I hope everybody has taken advantage of the royal car wash. Especially, uh, the other day, Heather said she was almost missing a bank deposit because of the lines, but.
Yeah, that was some pretty good planning on that. That was a joke, that was a joke.
No problem.
Anyways, I bailed myself a bit twice, today, two different cars, and I probably will not be able to open the doors tomorrow, it will freeze, so, yeah.
No, I got, I paid ninety bucks a month for Delta Sonic, you gotta stick with it.
You gotta stick with it.
I have heard that, um, it's a strange.
I'll be next place.
Royal. All right, uh, regarding the sewer, uh, there are, um, conversations continuing with the engineers, I know that Jake and Art at the town, as well as P and L and, um, Lobella, met this past week, had conversation, and, uh, so it is ongoing. When that information is presented to the town board and to the village board, we will agree again upon a public hearing, and that information will be then presented, hopefully in February, to the public in a public hearing. So, things are, again, moving forward, and, um, expect to hear shortly. Anything else? Um, I have one other thing, and that is, uh, the Parks and Recreation Committee is looking for a few good men, uh, and women, uh, any interested person who would like to become part of that committee, uh, they're welcome to stop by on the fourth Wednesday at seven o'clock of each month, fourth Wednesday of the month, at seven o'clock here, um, right?
Right.
Here, and, uh, you will be greeted, and, um, given some information about what Parks and Rec Committee does, and, um.
And you can sit on the new chairs.
They can sit on the new chair, very comfortable, um, actually, we could move these out there,
we could.
So if anybody's interested, um, please, uh, either contact the village and/or stop by, or Wednesday. All right, next village board meeting will be, uh, the workshop, February fifth, coming up, and the next one after that will be on February fourteenth, and again, I would mention that that will be the night of public hearing on a law for wireless communication facilities. So, if you're interested, both turn in, tune in, I suppose you'd say. Check us out on Facebook, comments can be made there, and also stop in and make your comments known here. Then it is seven fifty-one, and I thank you all for tuning in, and may I have the motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
We did it all.
Thank you very much.
Nice job.
Nice job.
That's a great night.
It is.
Yeah. I mean, the drivers.
If there's an issue, I have to be there.
I thought Joe was empty.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.